All right, it is seven o'clock. We will call this meeting to order. Tracy, may we have a roll call, please?
Here. Justin Thomas.
Here.
Cory Jones.
Here.
Scott Hoff.
Here.
Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Matt Mecca.
Here.
Amy Wild.
With all seven members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. "The mission statement of Palmyra Eagle Area School District is to ensure that students excel with intellectual virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual." Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, formation, legal, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
The agenda this evening, any changes requested this evening? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
With no members in attendance, we will bypass public comment. Board monitoring, nice to see Mr. Stick this evening.
Hello, okay, you can hear me? Good, so my presentation tonight admittedly isn't the most exciting, but we've had some really good growth that's come from it, so I'm excited about it, and we're excited at the elementaries, but a little bit dry. So today I'm going to be presenting on how data is used to inform educational decisions related to student learning. So I'm going to go over what assessments we use to collect data, where we house the data once it's collected, and how we use data to influence instruction and support all learners. So data at the elementary level. At both Eagle Elementary and Palmyra Elementary, data is collected to help inform instructional decisions. Both buildings are completely aligned with the timing of educational assessments, so those are typically fall, winter, and spring, and the data comes from a variety of sources that I'm going to go over now. So the first one is the MAP test, which you've probably heard a lot about if you've read our board reports, or if you have your own children. The measure of academic progress, so MAP assessments measure what students know and inform our educators what they're ready to learn next. So we dynamically, or the MAP test actually dynamically adjusts each student's performance. The MAP assessments create a personalized assessment experience that accurately measures their performance, so whether a student performs above, on, or below grade level. Also, if a student gets a certain amount of questions right or wrong, it kind of changes, so it's a little different than standard typical tests that you may be used to. Once testing is completed, easy-to-use reports can be generated to help the teachers teach, the students learn, and the administrators focus on professional development efforts for the educators. MAP growth reveals how much growth has occurred between testing events, and when combined with nationwide norms, shows projected proficiency. Educators can track growth through the school year and over multiple years. So and kind of like I said before, at the elementary level, we really look hard at the fall, winter, and spring. New this year is AmesWeb Plus. We've used AmesWeb in the past, AmesWeb 1.0, to progress monitor and screen students. This year AmesWeb Plus has come along, and we've been really liking the results that we're getting from it. The big thing is that informs our instruction and improves our student performance through the ability to screen and progress monitor students. We use that in grades K through six, and one of the nice things about AmesWeb Plus is that it is really quick to administer, about one to four minutes, and now that we've gone through our winter assessments, so we're on our second time through using AmesWeb Plus, the teachers are really kind of humming along and really enjoying the new program that we offer. Next, we've got Fanta's and Pennell Running Records. These are really important because they help us determine students' instructional and independent reading levels. It allows teachers to recommend a placement level for instruction. We also form our groups for reading instruction, and it helps us come up with really just an overall plan for what to do during reading time. It also helps us identify students who need intervention and extra help, and it can, we can use it to monitor and report out on student progress. It's also really popular for parent conferences, and we have it on our report cards at the elementary level as well. So next, we have EduClimber. And what EduClimber is, is it's a cloud-based system, so we can, we have it on our Chromebooks, and it's a way that we use, it's kind of like a storehouse for all of the assessments that I just mentioned. So what we really like is we can take all of those assessments, and then we can triangulate the data, so we can take all three and really look at it to help us make decisions. So we use it by housing all that data in one location, and then our educators can maximize their time on what's important, and the teachers can help the students through that. So how's it used? In both elementary buildings, EduClimber is used to support effective database decisions on student instruction. It helps us determine what students need intervention to best meet their needs, and it also helps us determine what students would benefit from advanced enrichment opportunities. So it's not just the students that struggle, it's the students that are advanced as well, and it helps us determine who those students are, which is really important. Additionally, it can also be used at the administrative level. I know myself, Steve Greenquist, our interventionist, all benefit from EduClimber. Additionally, special educators can see students on their caseload, school psychs, really a variety of people can benefit from EduClimber, it's not just the teachers. So how do we use it for academics specifically? EduClimber is a one-stop shop for educators to use and access academic assessment information, so the MAP, the Fanta's and Pennell, and the AmesWeb progress monitoring. Each student at the elementary level has access to each individual student's assessment data that they can bring up quickly using their Chromebooks. Educators are able to monitor progress of students from their own class or through entire class cohorts. So if you have multiple grade levels, like at Palmyra Elementary, you can look at both grade levels. With all of this data in one place, educators can better understand their students' needs, and we can plan data meetings around targeting growth for all students and setting realistic goals and outcomes. Something that I'm really excited about is using EduClimber for behavioral data. This is completely new this year, so something that we've just started to implement, but I've really seen some, there's some really good potential for this. So EduClimber can be used to monitor behavioral data. Teachers enter minor or major behavior incidents into EduClimber. And then what happens is we can then have a documented record of where things are happening, at what time, which students were involved, and what was the student's perceived motivation. So this can help us as a PBIS committee by deciding where we want to really focus our positive behavioral efforts in the school. So that's been really positive so far. We can determine whether things are happening in the classroom, in the hallway, at recess, or wherever, and then really zone in and target those areas to be preventative and proactive so that we can prevent things from negative behaviors from ever occurring in the first place. So that's been really exciting this year. So what do we do with the data? So at both elementary buildings, we have similar procedures. I'm going to focus on Eagle Elementary, but Palmyra Elementary is doing some similar things, but just with different amounts of staff members over at Palmyra Elementary. So after each assessment period, fall, winter, and spring, we hold data meetings. So we look at all the data that's collected, and we involve myself, so administrators, classroom teachers, our interventionists. So at Eagle, Justine Hamer, the reading interventionist, Maria Schmidt, the math interventionist, and Tracy Firm, the learning support teacher. This starts with interventionists reporting out on student growth and goals based on the previous interventions. We then determine tier-two intervention groups. So the students that are struggling, they are then going to get an extra dosage of support from our interventionists. So what we do is we determine the intervention focus, so if it's reading, it could be fluency, accuracy, comprehension, computation, et cetera. And we also determine what the program is that we're going to use to, for that intervention. So it helps us really zero in and be specific and intentional on the program that we're going to use and the behaviors that we want to target. And then lastly, we decide, will students be progress monitored? If it's a little bit more serious of something that we're targeting, yes, we'll progress their, or monitor their progress and report that to classroom teachers, to parents, and to me. We also have grade-level meetings that we use EduClimber for as well. At these meetings, we determine how we will personalize instruction through the use of our 30-minute intervention and enrichment block. At Palmyra Elementary, this is called the PAW time. This is time that's built into each teacher's schedule in grades K through six, similar to the resource at the middle school, high school level. Additionally, we do the following. So we review somewhat of assessments, so things like unit tests, performance assessments, student work, and then also the EduClimber data. Then we determine tier-one differentiation groups based on the data. So this is what the teachers are doing in their classrooms. So we decide on our differentiation focus, so it could be a literacy or math focused, depending on what the students need and what EduClimber and our assessments tell us. We then discuss which tier-one resources will be used, so we've got a variety of things that we can draw from, and then we determine strategy groups, ways that we're going to help our students in either literacy or math. So the idea is to be as intentional and focused as we can to help our students out. New this year as well, our professional learning communities. We've been doing as part of our staff meetings for years trying to incorporate professional development, but this year we're really focusing on using professional learning communities to increase teacher collaboration. So after our grade-level meetings have been held, we then meet as a PLC. At Eagle, these happen on Wednesdays as part of our Wednesday staff meetings, and we share expertise. We work together to improve teaching skills and academic performance of students. So each PLC has four questions that we try to answer. What is it that we want our students to learn? And that varies from PLC meeting to PLC meeting depending on our focus of that meeting. How will we know when they've learned it? So how are we seeing progress? What's the data telling us? How will we respond when some students do not learn it? So then, you know, how are we going to help support students? And then how can we extend and enrich learning for students that have demonstrated proficiency? So how can we help students that already know the key content that they have to learn, and how can we advance our opportunities for them? So the idea is how to teach, collaborate, exchange ideas, learn from each other, and then that kind of continues and cycles on. So lastly, supporting all learners. In conclusion, at the elementary level, we collect data from high-quality assessments like the MAP, the AmesWeb, and Fanta's and Pennell Running Records, and then we analyze this collection of data using EduClimber. This guides our data meetings and PLC discussions around improving learning, which allows educators to offer a continuum of supports that stem from high-quality instruction. So what we really focus on is the use of data, collaborating together as educators, and then we're able to ensure that learning for all is possible for all students in the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Questions for, yeah, fire away, you bet.
EduClimber, like how that, like, how is it the same or different, like Wise Dash?
I feel like the cloud-based component, I'm not really very familiar with Wise Dash. I wasn't able to use it much, but I feel like for MAP, for example, when students take tests for MAP, we can get that data pretty much almost instantly up to EduClimber. So that's one big advantage, the cloud-based part to it, but I'm not as familiar with Wise Dash, so maybe that's kind of come a long way.
Wise Dash.
Okay, yeah. And one thing that I didn't mention about EduClimber as well is that it is a Wisconsin-based company, which is kind of exciting. It started here in Wisconsin, and it's kind of grown, and it seems like a lot of districts in Wisconsin are using it, but also it's spreading out kind of nationwide, so it is kind of exciting to watch it grow. Any other questions?
Is that something, so then does that data, is that followed up through the 712 level too? Is there kind of an expansion into it that way?
Yeah.
So Carrie knows when they come up here?
That's a great question. So right now, it is just an elementary thing, but I know Nick Jones is looking into, and Amanda Jones have been looking into using EduClimber more through the 7 through 12 level as well. So yeah, but it's something that we've kind of kicked off at the elementary level and just kind of piloted, but I think we're finding that we're really liking it and seeing some good things from it.
Is it, is it a license that we bought, or what, how does it, how did it start working? Yes?
Yeah, yep.
All right. Anybody else?
I don't have any questions on this. Thank you for presenting that. Just, how's everything going at Eagle?
I think we're really coming along right now. I think we're moving past the fire from the summer. The new staff lounge just came in. I want to thank our PTO for that. They made, did an incredible job. So I think teachers have been really happy with that. I've had a lot of teachers talking to me as we're starting. Now we're almost done with our winter assessments, and there have been a lot of happy teachers seeing some good growth from the fall to the winter. So I think all the hard work that the teachers are putting in is starting to pay off, so I know that's got teachers excited. And overall, I'm always happy and smiling, as I'm sure you guys know.
Is everything going well with other administrators?
Yes, yep, great leadership team. I learn a lot from, I enjoy working with Steve Greenquist and kind of utilizing the wealth of knowledge that he has, and yeah, I think it's a great leadership team.
Is everything going okay with, you know?
Yep, yep, he's great.
Thank you again for this.
Yep.
It'd be nice to see some exemplary data, what you use in your collaborative meetings, so we can see what.
Exactly, yeah, like our PLCs and, like Student A, Student B, yeah.
Heard of data.
Yeah, exactly, especially since this is in such the early stages, but yeah, that would be really nice to kind of show you collections of, from fall to winter to spring, and I'm just starting to see that now with some of the winter. Exactly, and that's one of the biggest things that I would say has been, my personal growth goal this year is using this data more and helping the teachers use it. And it's not something that we've always done at Eagle Elementary, and I benefited a lot from working with Sam Crary last year, last year's LSD, and then also Tracy Firm. We kind of really look at that data together and try to break down, how are we going to get this information to the teachers? So that has been something that I've really enjoyed. So yeah, it's still kind of in the early stages, but I feel like it's kind of going to have a snowball effect. We're going to see some really big results as we get more comfortable using data and analyzing data.
And then you can take the same back to the curriculum side and try to rebuild things as to what you see falls in and what, where you.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Sounds good. Anybody else? Thanks.
All right, well, thank you guys.
All right, on to committee reports. CNP this evening.
We met this past Thursday, and we approved and reviewed some policies that are on the agenda for tonight. Again, you know, the girls that are working with curriculum policy are doing a fabulous job, looking into things and always very open to questions and answers and input. Very, really, really like our committee, I really like our team there. And then we also looked into the PES work release, Youth Apprenticeship Program, and a couple of changes that are going to be made on that, but probably, I, for sure, for the 2018-2019 program, not, not anything happening this year, so. And that's about it.
Thank you. BNG.
All right, we met this evening. Starting now with the Palmyra Elementary floor. It's supposed to be completed over spring break. We have the fencing purchased for the, to put around the gym area, the main entrance there for when, if ice and snow forms on top of the gym, to keep people away from that danger zone there. So it's not something stationary, it can be moved around, and Rich thinks he's got other uses for it down the road to, to utilize that. Here at the high school, middle school, I guess we have a small gas leak potentially in one of the science rooms that's being dealt with promptly, and we're actually going to be, Rich is going to be looking at how much that's actually even used for each of the six rooms that have gas piped to them. So Leacher's here, middle school, working, he's working on that. I guess they don't open, so that's why you might have seen chairs set up, so. Does not open at all right now, so. He's planning that, it doesn't come out, so it, he's, he doesn't think it's a motor, he thinks it's powered to a relay or something, maybe a controller type thing. And then the big thing again is.
Does it usually have like a manual crane to mount there, like thing you plug in?
Oh, oh, you mean also?
Yeah, I thought there was always a backup. Or is that just my day?
There must not be.
Just one of the two kids.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Get your momentum.
And so then the last thing, which is looking at are just the cameras here at this school, and then eventually replacing what needs to be replaced versus, like, again, just making sure we don't have any dead zones as far as high-traffic areas with security, so. And that's going to continue on, so we'll see. We're doing what needs to be done right now, but there's still more work on that to determine what we want to do for the whole district.
Finance, Mr. Thomas.
We met earlier. I think the two big things were the refinancing, which we've forwarded for approval, and I believe that's on the agenda for tonight, of that one debt that we talked about last month. And the other big thing, we talked about having something prepared for the work session of all the principals' ideas for some cost-cutting measures, so we had a little bit of heads-up and notice so that we didn't all show up and say, here's all my ideas in a big stack, and not have any time to think, prepare, or be prepared. And I believe all the principals will be here, and then probably Rich for the 25th at 4:30. I believe that was it.
We met, thank you. We met earlier this evening, and Stephanie updated us on the Honor the Educator wall. The new plaques are in, seven new members for our Honor the Educator wall. The Realtor Open House is going to be on February 22nd from 9:00 to 10:00 at Eagle Elementary. Invites, hard copies and electronic email invites will be going out here next Monday, and at the Open House, the principals will each talk about a subject at each of the different schools. So it's not just about Eagle Elementary, it'll be tying in the whole district. Our YouTube channel is going well, and good evening and hello to everyone who's watching us tonight. Looks like we're getting a lot of views on there, so it's nice to have people looking in and seeing what's going on. We do have one page for everyone to go to, but then there is a separate playlist for each of the schools, so it's nice to have that separated out, and each, each school has their items up there. The spring newsletter, Stephanie is looking at March 12th as kind of a deadline, a goal for production to be done, and time for trimester to be done, and for the winter sports to be done, so everything to be included and updated there. And then finally, the Connect Five. Dr. Bloom has sent out numerous messages concerning the weather and what to, where to look and everything else, so hopefully parents have paid attention and they know everywhere they need to look to find out if we're canceled or not. And that is it.
All right, thank you. Administrators' reports. Sharon or Mr. Stick? You're all good? Anything? All right, sounds good. Consent agenda, the consent agenda is handled as, of course. Of course.
Okay, I was just looking at the middle school, high school one, and talking about the PLCs, and they mentioned having a common ninth-hour study hall for all high school students. I wondered if we're going to get information on that, like if that was replacing the resource hour, or if kids were going to be forced to have a study hall now? I just, I mean, if it's a change in schedule, I was just kind of interested in what that was going to look like. We know? You see it, first paragraph?
Oh, that'll be for next week.
I was just looking at as, as having a son who doesn't like to take study halls all the time. Are they going to be forced to take a study hall, or is this replacing the, like, moving the resource to the end of the day? That kind of thing, I guess, is, if we could get information on that.
Is that something you could send to Carrie and have her just follow up with us, Steve?
I can. I know that Ms. Tim will be a part of the Curriculum and Policy Committee meeting in February to talk about what is being proposed with those changes, but if you want an answer prior to that, I can certainly get one for you.
With students picking classes soon, that it was kind of important for them to be able to think about that, I guess.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Good? All right. The consent agenda is handled as a single motion and second. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. A special thanks, item G on the gifts and donations, to the Eagle PTO for their donation to all the goods in the Eagle Staff Lounge, specifically Jill Parrish, who was the chairperson for that section of the group. Action item A, consider approval of the first reading of the revised policies. So we'll go one by one. Item 1, 5136, personal communication devices.
We can't do them all.
You can do them as a group, correct? Okay, then we'll do them all as a group. Action item A, consider approval of the first reading of revised policies. Number 1, 5136, personal communication devices. Item 2, 7540.03, student education technology, acceptable use and safety. Item 3, 7540.04, staff education technology, acceptable use and safety. And item 4, 7540...
and then it went to CNP on Thursday night.
One thing that you can see in the links, too, is if it's color-coded, sometimes when you print it, it isn't print color, but if you read it on the screen, it's colored. You can tell the red was blocked out, and the green was what the new stuff was added. So that makes it easier to review policies. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the first reading of revised policies, 5136, 7540.03, 7540.04, and 7540.06, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item B. Consider approval of district space and program availability for the 2018-19 open enrollment applicants.
Move to approve of district space and program availability for the 18-19 open enrollment applicants.
Second.
Steve?
So for the record, and we will enter this in the minutes, the recommendation is that the board place no caps on either regular education seats nor special education programs.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the approval of district space and program availability for the 18-19 open enrollment applicants?
Second.
Steve?
So for the record, and we will enter this in the minutes, the recommendation is that the board place no caps on either regular education seats nor special education programs.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the approval of district space and program availability for the 18-19 open enrollment period as no caps, as stated by Dr. Bloom, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And last, consider approval of resolution to refinance $795,000 of current debt held with DTC.
I move to approve of resolution to finance $795,000 of current debt held with the DTC. Second.
All right. Questions about this one? What did the rate come down to, or?
3.75. It's a savings of $62,200.
Over the life of what, how many years?
Eight years.
Eight years? Okay. Very good. That was the good rate?
Yes.
Good. All right. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the approval of the resolution to refinance $795,000 of current debt held with DTC, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. District administrators' report.
Thank you. I'd like to announce for everyone, because I don't think everyone was here at the time to hear, but tomorrow at Palmyra Elementary School, Lisa Jensen has coordinated with Fort Healthcare, the pediatric wellness team, to be present. They are offering two sessions in the event that you're available and want to stop in. Grades kindergarten through third will run from 8:15 to 10:30 in the morning, and grades four through six, 12:45 to 2:45 in the afternoon. It's a program similar, but with updates and modifications from what was done at Eagle last spring. Also wanted to recognize Stephanie for her work again with the Honor and Educator Program. PR committee was apprised of the recipients. Most of them were surprised and honored to receive the recognition. There were some images that appeared on the district Facebook page, where those who made the nominations were also captured in an image with those who were recipients, which was very nice. So I think that's a positive program. The plaques are, as was stated earlier, available for you to see out in the hallway by the middle school gym. It's already been mentioned a couple of times. I'll also climb on board, thank you to Eagle PTO, who really spearheaded, I think, the invention of the new staff lounge. There were many, many other parties to that process, and I know Matt Stick would agree. It wasn't simply the PTO, but I know that they earmarked and designated a lot of their fundraising activities and got people involved with that. So thank you to anyone and everyone that had some involvement. If you have the opportunity and you're over at Eagle, stop in. I know Matt always gives a tour with a smile, and it's like your lounge at home would be. So, very nice, and I know the staff is very appreciative of those efforts. Also, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and recognize our crossing guards. The week of the 22nd through the 26th is proclaimed in the state by Tony Evers as Adult Crossing Guard Week. You recall what last week's weather was like in the morning, early, and in the afternoon, late, shepherding kids across our major thoroughfares. So kudos and thanks to those folks. Also like to mention two members that aren't typically crossing guards, but both Randy and Mario from PES have on occasion filled in as necessary. So recognition to them as well, and especially when the weather is what it was last week. State Education Convention is scheduled for next week. I've gone through the sessions that are available. There are a number that I think will help inform and enhance my work on behalf of the board and on behalf of the district. I've made note for those that I, at least initially and preliminary, hope to attend next week. Mention also, Scott does serve as your delegate. There's a very brief description of the proposed resolutions, and my recommendation for you as a board to give to Scott, as your delegate, I believe that all of them should be something that we would want to approve. A number of the resolutions are corrections to outdated language or wording that simply needs to be updated and amended. In other cases, there are those that may have to do with alternatives to school funding, which we certainly would be the beneficiary of. Keeping in mind that what the WASB uses the results from the Delegate Assembly for is to help shape and inform their lobbying efforts on behalf of public school boards in the state of Wisconsin. So I don't know if you have any questions about those. Feel free to ask. I think, Scott, you've got a pretty good direction in terms of how you would cast your vote, or did you want to have some discussion?
I haven't been told by anybody, so I think that's... And thank you for the synopsis.
Sure. You got... School Board election, we have two seats, and both incumbents have chosen to run again. So both Mr. Hoff and Mr. Thomas...
There can be write-ins.
And, yeah, there can be write-ins, certainly.
This one.
Mrs. Alice, as your clerk, with the help of Tracy, did oversee the drawing of lots for placement on the ballot, and the selection indicates that Justin will appear first on the ballot, with Scott second on the ballot. So no need for a primary, because there was not more than two times the number of seats that were vacant. So nothing in February. And I included in your electronic packet a copy of the agenda, which was finalized today at the leadership team meeting for January 22nd, Teacher in Service Day. And I believe that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Any announcements or comments? Fishery tickets? Yeah. Got my winning ticket?
I sold out tickets. The fishery is the 27th. It does appear as though there will be ice. There were people out today, and so, good luck to those of you who purchased raffle tickets.
All right. Upcoming meetings and events. There's a board work session at 4:30 on Thursday, January 25th. Is that here or downstairs or in this building? Okay. CNP at 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 8th. Building and Grounds at 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 13th. Finance at 6:00 PM on the 13th. Public Relations, 6:30, and the regular board meeting at 7:00 o'clock, all on Tuesday, February 13th. With that, we will now hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everybody.